So far.
I have a lot of questions, so I don't know if you want us to go for number four member or?
You offer, go ahead.
Okay. So the first question I have, I would say, you know, I'm totally in support of midcaps. Obviously, you talked about how much, how that actually is, in my mind, when I looked at these cuts, I sort of categorized them into three, three different buckets. And I categorized them into teachers and programs, efficiencies and administrative cuts. And when I looked at all these cuts, I came up with teachers and programs being about $3 million of the total cuts. And that's about 73% of the cuts. It came up with efficiencies of about 672, which is only 16% of the cuts. And then I came up with administrative being about 439,000, only 11% of the cuts. And I feel like in four, in, in, for a district to fairly make cuts across the board, you know, I think I've sat here for many, many board meetings and said, I don't support cuts that impact our teachers and our students in the classroom directly. And then, in all fairness to our administrative team, we as a board, we were given the opportunity to give administration some direction regarding this year's budget back in September of 2023. And that was a piece of paper that I handed out to everybody. We received that piece of paper in September and we never came back and gave administration direction on what were our budget priorities. So I think that, that's, that's challenging because we're not giving them any direction as far as what our budget priorities really should been as a board. So we're really taking their input and trying to, and I think that's why these cuts are difficult, because we never give them the direction. So shame on us, previous board, we never gave the board, we never gave administration the direction that we should have done. I don't know why it didn't come back to the board for discussion. But that, that is, you know, I'm frustrated with that, to be honest with you. I don't think it's fair to our administration. I would also say, to do a fair job of cuts, we need to see more of a balance between the teachers and the programs and administrative cuts. And so I went through and I looked at midcaps, that's an efficiency, in my opinion. Like, that makes sense, great, we're involving more kids, that's, our students, that's wonderful. The elementary sped para changes, not super supportive of that because again, that's teacher and programs. And we don't know what the new kids coming into our district are going to be in 2026 and we don't know what their needs are. So I feel like as a board, this is a disingenuous ask because we could come back next year and, and someone say, we need three elementary speds because we have three kinders that came in with super high needs. Then we're going to be asked as a board to go over budget because we just made this cut. Because we can't not give the kids what they need. So I'm very concerned about those para cuts because I feel like, how do you know? We've been told we don't know what these kids are coming into the district. As far as eliminating online, I know we lose a lot of students to other online programs. I also know that we have other online programs that we use. So the only reason that I'm sort of in supportive of this eliminated online is because it was put in place during COVID and we're not, it's not COVID times and we don't have that COVID money. So I feel like for that one, I'm, I'm a little bit more supportive of that one. Reduction in iPads, that again is a program. Reduction in staff desktop computers, I'm very concerned about that because I would like to better understand what do our, what do our staff need in order to effectively do their jobs? If they need a big screen, I can tell you what, I can't stand looking at a small screen all day. It's very difficult to do a job. Oftentimes, teachers use them as dual screens. And like, what is it going to cost to add a mouse and a keyboard and a big screen for these teachers to be able to effectively do their jobs? So I'm not support, I, I understand like reducing the desktop computers, but I'd like to see what it would cost to give the staff what they need to successfully do their job. As far as eliminate eddy climber, brain pop, where did the Qualtrics go? Because that was on here before?
Yeah, unfortunately, they won't release us from the contract.
Okay, so that cost is not included anymore, that's fine. All right, and I'm supportive of that. Transportation, that's an efficiency, very excited that we did that. Reducing the tetosus stipends. I, you know, I put that under programs. Cube cup adjustments make sense, again, an efficiency. As far as the fur logo, I'm, I'm concerned about this because it doesn't fix a problem. And all it does is, and I understand you changed how it's listed on here and that.
It's actually struck, it's not on here any longer.
Okay, all right, because I was gonna say.
It would be voluntary, so we're not going to bank for savings, we've, we've already made it for that.
Well, because I was gonna say, all it does is just say, yes, we gotta do this again because we're not really making a, a cut. Administrative assistant reductions, that I put under administration. And then we get into other reductions. The fitness committee expense of $15,000, it's such a minimal amount of money. And my concern about that is that as a board, we even, it even says in like Minnesota state statute that we are, we are able to put in staff incentive programs. And I would just like to know, how many real staff incentive programs do we have in our, in our district? And taking away something from our staff that makes their day a little bit brighter and makes their job a little easier and it's $15,000, I feel like we could like find that someplace else. And then, of course, I've shared my thoughts about the pool. And that's it. So I guess overall, I personally, and then, oh, I have one other thing, I'm sorry. The other thing is, when we, when I looked at the revenue, the revenue that was quoted tonight and then the expenses, that gets us to about four and a half million that we need to reduce. So my question is, with these budget reductions, are we going to be bringing a balanced budget forward to the board without tapping into fund balance? Because I'm showing short, we're about $400,000 if I calculate this correctly.
Yep, we will continue to work on getting that. And again, we don't know what our enrollment numbers are, so a lot, there's a lot of assumptions built into this. And we're constantly revising it and going through. I think there's some grants that we don't have included in here. There's a couple other things that we can be looking at.
Okay, and then my suggestion is, you know, I wanted to see a budget, another scenario. Because I feel like the one thing that's missing from our strategic plan is that we have this new plan in place and now, how do we really put this plan in place? So if we're looking at advanced classes or academic excellence, I personally would like to see another like $2 million in administrative cuts happening and taking that money and saying, how can we invest this back into our students and our programs? And I'm, I think we can do that from, you know, just looking at the charts and looking at the information that we received. Our administrative support has increased over the years. And so that was kind of my challenge back to, back to Dr. Thomas in my feedback. And that's something that I would like to personally see. So that we can make these investments back into the classroom. It's particularly around the special and talented and gifted programs and like our advanced options, advanced math in the middle school, whatever it might be.
Director White, are you wanting to move forward as listed?
Yes, move forward as listed.
I'll just go around. Director Olson?
Yes, I mean, we're, we're, we all have our things, right? And whether we have a personal connection to something or we have, or we don't, you know, it all, it, it just, it, you know, as I keep going back to, you know, what Dr. Thomas says, you know, the things that people love don't come for free. And even though we have our new strategic plan and I am 100% committed to that strategic plan and, you know, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not a fan of taking PD away from teachers. And that, you know, all, all of these different things, we all have our things, right? And it's just hard. And at the end of the day, you know, we, I thought we were very transparent with our community, you know, during the levy process and said, you know, this could happen and we're there, unfortunately. And we're going to be here again next year. And I, that's what I'm really, I'm trying to think future too, that, I'm not looking forward to that either. And I'm not trying to dismiss it and say, looking forward, I mean, it stinks, this all stinks. Nobody wants to do this. But at the end of the day, our community spoke and so that's what we have to go by. And so, yes, unfortunately, and with a very heavy heart, I say, yes.
Director Mason?
I mean, generally, I, I feel like we can do a better job keeping the cuts away from our students and programming. Also, I think I've been very clear about that. I think that we can do a better job targeting some other places. You know, I'm supportive of the midcaps move. I'm supportive of eliminating the online, the transportation. You know, the pool, I guess, depends on what comes back. But, you know, I think my biggest concern with these proposals is that we are not bringing up funds to focus more on academic outcomes and that's concerning to me. So I've asked, you know, many questions around the new investments we made in '23, '24 that we've spent nearly a million dollars on and the number of staff that we have, administrative assistants and looking for organizational rationalization and realignment in some of the programs and administration, overall student support staff that I think that we could do a better job addressing versus removing some of these programs and to also free up more money to focus on academic outcomes, which I think we are missing the mark on huge. And that's, I'm not supportive of this budget for that reason. I think we need to free up more money to focus on that. I think that's my biggest concern.
Director Johnson?
Dr. Thomas, you mentioned earlier talking about titles or?
The positions.
The positions. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that's our next topic. You want to finish this and then we'll jump into that to kind of round some of that out too.
Well, that, I think, might, might, that might be something Director Mason was talking about because that whole '23, '24, that's just looking at one of the things that came out.
If you're okay, we'll, we'll jump into that conversation to, to talk a little bit about that.
That's, that's okay.
Maybe help balance.
Did I make a comment though? As I stated, I'm good going forward, but I did have one question I didn't get a chance to ask earlier before Dan came up and spoke about the pool and the long-term facilities maintenance. And that's that while we were talking about the midcaps savings of not having the transportation to and from the Lakeville site and we also talked about the reduction in the administrator and of course, the administrative assistance there and reallocating that workload to the existing educators. Concurrent to that, you mentioned the increase in enrollment to midcaps. Have we or have you looked at a threshold? Because when you start to reallocate that workload, we've got a resource utilization cap that is based upon human capacity. And we've got a lot of people already operating on our subsistence level due to the lack of funds while we're trying to increase educational outcomes to a very, very well-respected program. So the only thing that I would ask is that we look at that enrollment into midcaps and make sure that we can adequately service those students with our existing resources and not overtax that because then we will see diminishing returns from that program. Other than that, everything here we have to do, we don't have a choice and unfortunately, it's only going to get worse.
Chair White, thank you for that. Chair White, before we go into there, maybe we can do a little quick relief for?
Sure.
She lives in the back?
I'm in the front, 0905.
Fired back up here?
All right, thank you, thank you Chair White and Directors. Yeah, so I'm going to actually turn the floor over to Director Herman, who will walk through kind of a reconciliation conversation to make better meaning of some of the data that's out there and being discussed with very report. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Herman.
So as a supplemental document to the budget presentation, I noted the administrators' comparisons of number of positions from the previous plan year, dating back to '16, '17, which was one of the original requests a while ago, actually. And I apologize for somebody that have been on the board, this is a repeat, but I just want to make sure that, that everyone is aware. Unfortunately, Skyward lacks significant position control capabilities. And each contract and how each contract has been negotiated over the years, an FTE means something a little bit different depending on that. And then also with changes and when people leave the system, come into the system, leaves, all that kind of stuff. It's, it's very wildly inefficient reporting capabilities that Skyward's had to actually truly reflect how many positions were there. With the mandatory upgrade to the new Skyward, we are working very hard and diligently between business office and HR to, to build out so we can have a true position control so that these reports that we should be able to easily produce as part of like a monthly report to you all, will be available moving forward. But historically, the data is extremely difficult to get out. So it takes a very long time unfortunately to come up with these reports. So I started with administrators. If it's the will of the board, I'm happy to assign and work on that within my team, within the capabilities that we have to do the similar report for other positions or maybe just look at one specific year for all positions. But unfortunately, just it takes, it takes a significant amount of time to go through this. But this is where we started with administrators, not all administrative staff, which some people have different definitions of what that means. So again, if it's the will of the board for us to go into a deep dive on a historical analysis of our staffing, happy to, to, to do that and try to see what my team's capabilities are of how long that will take us to do. I just want to be really clear on what everybody's definition is and the will of the board of that definition. Because this is an example of what we could do, but it does take a significant amount of time to get that done. And then the other piece of that, that I would just like to, to offer is if there are any positions that anybody has some questions around, like what does that position do? And maybe what compliance-related work it does or what essential work it does versus what maybe those, I think somebody used the word today, luxuries or whatever else that may be. Happy to either help answer those questions or connect you with those administrators so they can talk to you about what that functionality is for each of them. Because even though, I believe somebody made a reference to administrative assistants, administrative assistants all have different projects that they oversee or compliance-related work that they do. But that's all a little bit different from each other. Their classifications might be the same because the roles and the scope of it are the same pay grade. But it really just depends on which one you're looking at. So I'm happy to give a little bit more in-depth analysis of that, of that essential work that they do. If that would be something that would be helpful as well. But I just wanted to show this as an example of what we could do. If it's the will of the board, this would be helpful in the long run. Looking at, as you all have mentioned, this is just year one. We're continuing to find different resources, optimizing them and then looking at next year. But as you can see from this report, there's just a lot of moves even with titles, restructuring assignments, cutting from here, adding over here, all that kind of stuff. So I don't know if this helps with the administrators, but just wanted it as our talking point to talk about and then make sure to get the will of the board of what work to move forward with. Because again, I think this is the fourth time I've said this, but it takes, it takes a lot of time unfortunately with our Skyward's inability to do this work.
Director Herman, could you, I'm sorry, Director Mason?
I was just going to ask a really quick question because not all of these things are, some of them are funded by grant, but it looks like some of them may also be funded out of community ed.
This is all positions that we, when we talk about administrator, this is all positions that we talk about, but this is, these are funded by multiple different funds. This is just the whole list of all positions in the district, not specific to the general fund.
Because that would be just nice to know, like which ones are funded from Fund II, Fund IV or grant. Because again, some things are not going to be within the Fund I. You know, some of the discussion that we've talked about with the titles and the positions and stuff like that to really get an understanding of where they are, that was my only ask.
And I don't, just, sorry, Director Franz, members of board, I don't know if we'll have the capacity to do a historical look at that.
No, I'm not asking for that either.
We, and I believe we did do that already for the district staff of like an overall breakdown of what they all are. We could give more specifics, individual positions if, if, if that would be helpful in the will of the board. But historically, to show all of the number of positions over the years plus which ones are not in different funds, I think would get very convoluted because there's a lot of fluidity to that as well.
I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else, but.
Oh, sorry, the colors, I'm lost. So as our, as our team was going through and making sure the data was accurate to the best of our abilities, we were adding, when there was an add, it's a green, when there's a reduction, it's a red. Because we're also tracking when there was title changes or positions were being realigned, just to make sure that we're tracking all of that. And then we were going to take that off, but we also felt that it might be helpful for you all to see that. It just, you know, when looking at what positions have been added over the years or which positions have been reduced over the years. So we just left that color coding in there just to help maybe draw the eye to which positions have been either restructured and moved around or new titles or just changes in general.
And Director Herman, would you walk through one or two positions just to kind of illustrate the point, to like walk them through, reading across left to right, what happened to a certain position that might have been renamed and so it looks like it got eliminated, but it's actually just, or it looks like we added, but we actually just renamed and things of that nature, just to give a?
Assistant principal? Because that's, that one has a lot of changes and I was going to ask that same question.
So the assistant principal one, for an example, is when we move the, I'm sorry, I should have had numbers by the rules, that would have been very helpful. When you look at the area learning center coordinator reduction in '23, '24, that wasn't a reduction of an FTE, it was, they were moved into the principal assistant principals bargaining unit and are now classified as assistant principal. So then you see a corresponding increase in the assistant principal group, for example. A, a good example of what Dr. Thomas was asking for, if Director Powers doesn't mind me using the, his department, his department has gone through quite a bit of restructuring, either titles or realigning, you know, where they're at, just the most recent one is on the slide deck today. But whether it's changing it from director of operations, operation services, operational services, operations/transportation, like over the years, those titles have changed quite a bit. So it just correlates to a bunch of different lines. So again, unfortunately, Skyward is not awesome about really tracking all of that for us. So, and I didn't want to miss anything on here. So if you're looking back at different org charts or past org charts, we left those titles there so that, and you can align those with that. But that's a really good example of not only organizational structure changes, like this currently happened, but also the operations services department has gone through quite a different title changes as things have been aligned underneath them or moved in different directions.
What is, so I think it was at the last board meeting, we got an FTE by building location. Does that come out of the same system?
It's the new Skyward. So we're very optim, I'm sorry, Director Mason, members of the board, that's out of the new system, the Skyward Q. That also took quite a bit of cleanup to do, but not, not as much as the previous one. We are still working through and trying to build out so that we can optimize the new system as best as possible so we can get to a true position control system. But that report was pulled out of the, the new one and then cleaned up from there. And then the, every year after that is the old one and we only have very limited access to that data. And then there's even some data previous to that, so.
For me, that was a better picture. I was able to export that into Excel, dump it, throw a quick pivot in there in five minutes and I can see, you know, by job code and position and building, anything, you know, all that information is there. So for me, that's a better report. I, I guess when you look at this one that you shared right now, I struggle with, it doesn't match to the one that was produced last time as well as it doesn't match to some of the numbers that were even in our financial statement. Like there's all, the numbers are all different. And I suspect it's probably just what you're calling administrators versus administration versus not teaching.
Versus the general fund.
I mean, even like when I looked at the dump from the last meeting, we have, you know, most of our teachers that are classified, you know, our deans, our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors, they're all classified as teachers, right? So I mean, that's what's hard. I feel like it's easier for me to look at that FTE by building because I can see that more personally, but.
And if it's the will of the board for like a specific year that you want to dive deeper into, that's a report that we could then focus on and look at and clean up. Historically, that will be very difficult. But happy if there's like a specific point in time that you all want to reference back to, we can look at pulling a similar report to what was provided in the last one for the current year and getting that cleaned up for that.
I think for me, this data is only, it only paints part of the picture, right? Because there's no deans, there's no administrative assistants and those in my mind are administrative roles. So unless they're in a classroom, teaching a student or supporting a student like a para, in my mind, they're administrative. And where I'm struggling with the historical data is that we have a report right in our financial report. I know it's the MDE STARS data report where there is historical data. So like, why wouldn't we have that historical data if we have it in a different format? And to me, this report, I appreciate all your work. I think that, you know, and I appreciate all the explanation of it. But to me, this doesn't paint a picture of what we're, what in my mind I'm trying to understand is really where have we seen the increase of staff when we see declining enrollment and we've seen increase in staff? And to me, you have to look at that and optimize your resources.
Yeah, Director Jackson, I apologize for missing the mark on this. Just trying to get historical access to all of our data for you all. But, and I don't know if you want me to explain the STAR report again and why that's not apples to apples and how that doesn't even include all of our FTE in it or, or what. I can go into that, that explanation again if you all want.
No, and I, I mean, I took the STARS report and I even compared it to other districts and they don't have the increase in their, what they call total administrative staff. So that's where I'm looking at ours and saying, okay, I'm sorry, in my mind, the total administrative staff has seen a big increase, double of what we were back in 2016, 2017. So I'm just trying to get the data to be able to, like Director Mason said, the report you locked, did last time, it had every job code, it was super easy to see. This is how many positions, this is how many FTE. And I understand why that might be difficult to go back and look at because how do you go back and track all that data? But I would assuming based on the fact that we're a public school and we have public data, I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't have that.
So Director Atkinson, members of board, I am, I'm happy to go back and, and find it and, and get a report that would be similar to it. It just would be very helpful for me to get a better understanding of the will of the board because it's going to be a lot of work. And we have a lot of work coming up for the department. So I just want to make sure I'm prioritizing the essential work and compliance work in my department along with getting the information that the will of the board wants. So I'm happy, I'm happy to look at, if you want to compare it to last year or 10 years ago or whatever that is. I just, I would like to have a better direction of what year that is and what is all hoped for on that.
And I can appreciate what you're saying, Director Atkinson. Except that if we go back to a point in time and wonder why there's, there's, there's a different amount of administrators more or less, e, e, even that's not an apples to apples because what, what are, are the reporting requirements the same as they were in 2016? Have they changed to now? I mean, this seems like an awful lot of work to, to lay out this map when you still won't be able to accurately compare the number of ministers we had in, say, '17, '18 with '24, '25. Because who knows how many of the requirements of the staff have changed since then, which would then lend itself to whatever increases we're talking about or decreases, either way. I'm struggling with having the? I'm struggling with having Emily's department spend that inordinate amount of time when even if we get what we want, is it really accurate? Does it really tell the entire story? If you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, because we have the MDE, the MDE Stars Data, which to me, it shows, it shows the data that I need to see. Even though you say, well, it's not exactly right, or not exactly classified, it has to show our total licensed positions because that's what the report says. So to me, we have the data. I personally, I agree with what you're saying, I understand the amount of work that would be created. I think given the fact that we are past setting budget priorities, because as a board, we didn't do it last year for this year, I feel like this only, this exercise would only be relevant as we're setting our board priorities for the 26, 27 year. And that what would be, I think would be a better use of our district's time is to do more of a, what did you call it, Director Mason, when you said more of like a org chart type of exercise?
Organizational rationalization, or some, I mean.
Yeah, where you're really looking at and say, okay, does this staff member have this many direct reports? Or, you know, how many executive staff have administrative assistants? What's that role? Could that role be absorbed into a different role? I mean, that's the type of things that I think would be a better use of your time because I agree with you, even our students' needs were different 10 years ago than they are today. So they require different staff and different needs, so.
Chair White, I just think, if I may, in listening to all of the things talked about regarding this, it's challenging for these asks because it seems as though it's being assumed that they haven't done the organizational work in which that's what they're, that's their, that's their position to do. So I, I guess I'm challenged to, I wouldn't ask the, I wouldn't ask for recreating all this and spending all this time doing this type of work that's looking in the rearview mirror. I just, I, even, even if it was the will of the board, I guess, help me understand what you do with the information once received.
I think when you look at, when I was trying, if you look at the STAR's report, you can see that right here, it says back in the administration, for fiscal year 2018, we had 24.6 licensed positions, and now we have 50.3. So I would ask why, and the teaching staff is about the same. So it's really understanding our staffing models and where do those budget reductions come into place? But like I said, I feel like we are doing something, I would think it's a waste of your time until we get to the point of setting our board's next budget priorities. I feel like this is, we've, we're past this already, right? And it's almost like, I don't even know, I appreciate the data, but you can't analyze the data if it's not complete.
Cool. Can I just say, so we, we had the STAR's report explain to us, and I mean, it's the same for every district, it's not accurate to how districts have their org charts and the titles and stuff like that. And it's, it's been talked about multiple times last year that those, that the STAR's report is not an accurate representation, and how they actually do the allocation, things like that. So I think that what we need to do is move beyond, because we're not going to change the way the MDE organizes their stuff, and it isn't reflective of, of many districts, especially those who have people that travel between buildings and have multiple jobs and all that kind of stuff. So again, that, that has been explained, gosh, at least three or four times now, I believe. One time, very, very detailed, I think it was last year's spring. But I do, I don't want to have you guys do, my personal opinion is I don't want to have you guys do more work. We have an org chart that's in our audit, it's in our budget report. My only concern is making sure that when we're looking at these sites is that we know which fund they belong to because there's so many things that aren't going to impact Fund One and some things that we can't touch. And I'd like to look at current, instead of trying to compare back 10 years ago and figure out at the same title, the same position, et cetera, and also the, the same designation that was in the old HR system, still fits. I, I don't think that's a worthwhile exercise. So that's just my opinion.
So can I ask a clarifying question, Director Herman? The STAR's report, can you refresh, I mean, if this has been talked, I know that it's been talked about. I don't, I wouldn't be able to re-articulate or even recall all of the specifics regarding it. But the STAR's report, is the STAR's report a mandatory, something that the, the, all, all districts are mandatorily reporting to? Or is this a outside, can you help me?
And it's in our financial report. Vice Chair Bullion, members of the board, the STAR report is a yearly, very time-consuming requirement for all school districts to do. And it is utilized to ensure that, its, its main functionality is utilized to ensure that we have the proper licensures, teaching the proper classes, and the proper licensed administrators overseeing those classes. But then that data gets utilized and pulled in multiple different directions. That makes it very clunky and difficult and causes significant amount of confusion, which we've talked about. So the main purpose of it is really to make sure that school districts are not in violation of licensure and ensure that they're meeting their licensure requirements. So I, I, I looked through my stuff and unfortunately, I didn't have the STAR report in my handout here, but I have the admin report that Director Frederickson had to read for me the day that I lost my voice. But a good example of it is that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not accurate because if you look at the 2022 school year, it says we have 11 administrative assistants. That year, we had 55.7. And there are some years that it reports, like from 2013 to 2019, it releases us having zero directors. That's, that's not accurate. It's because every single year, the STAR report changes its classifications, it changes its coding, the U-FAR's manual changes every single year, that changes where things fall. Different districts report into that utilizing how they classify things, where they, where things go, all that kind of stuff. There's violations every single year, there are false violations that then get fixed on the backend, a lot with like changes in early childhood licensures, and also the kind of stuff happens with the data that's really, its primary purpose is to make sure that we're properly, we're following statute of licensures. So it's, it's difficult because it's understandable, it's causing quite a bit of confusion when it's out there and it's reporting these significant changes from zero directors to nine directors, but those nine directors existed previously, it's just not, they're not showing up in the other thing, so.
And I think what we've captured here, Director Herman, if I may, in, in your, in the spreadsheet, again, this is an example of just our administrator categories that we call administrators. Disregard STAR, okay? Because we don't, we don't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, except for like TOSA, I mean, except for the deans, they're, they're a TOSA, so they're within here, right?
Correct, these are, because those fall under the teacher contract. And so by state statute, they're teachers. Social workers, psychologists, counselors, they all fall under the teacher contract, and so they're going to be in that category. So what, what Emily and her team has done is with our data, our org structure, our titles, we've categorized for you every administrator, that big group, that's who you see here, dating back to 16, 17, at the very bottom grand total, you'll see the change over time. We didn't add all these administrators, which has, I, I've never been in a district where that narrative hasn't been out as street data, right? People are always saying, oh, you're adding all these administrators. You can see there was some elevation as a result of COVID, where some high administrative overhead to manage through that, that, that sunsetted. We're coming back down now, you know, for this year. So year-over-year averages, the variance is very slight. And what she was offering, and, and again, I would just say, this unpacking, I'm hoping that you understand, we don't have all of this fat administration. Director Atkinson, you talked about some of the cuts of how you categorized your spreadsheet, you know, with what we saw tonight, and 73% was teachers and 11% was administration. Kind of makes sense, 85% of our budget being people, we only make up 3% of the budget. Yet we're taking 11% in administrative costs to this budget. So proportionally, we're, you know, more than double of where we fall in terms of sheer composition. We will get to a point, folks, where, you know, we can talk about some of the core functions, particularly in Director Frederickson's shop, but administrative assistants, aren't people answering calls, getting emails? They're doing core functional work that by state law has to be segregated by duties. And, and so these are not, maybe the title's misleading, okay? We can talk about that, but the core functions, you can't replicate some of these things to say, well, let's just cut that because we have too many admin assistants. It, it's not that simple. So this is illustrative to show you, and this, this kind of breakout is very similar with other categories of our staff. So the notion through a STAR report that all this staff has been added, when in fact, like you said, the directors. And, you know, my, my push around that director one especially is, by law, we have to have a special ed director, but according to the STAR report, we didn't have one. We hadn't, okay? So I, I, I ask you all to look at this as an example of how we've been able to replicate and try to write the narrative that's out there as street data that's actual, that's more factual-based. And so I wouldn't propose a seven years history, because to Chair White's point, education looked fundamentally different back in 2016, 17. The, the needs, the structures, the, the statutes, the, the policies, mandates, et cetera, very different times compared to what we're living in now. And so if you want to do a year-over-year, maybe a two-year over two-year comparison, that's about as reliable as the data set is going to be. Anything beyond that, the context is, you're not comparing the same context.
Can I ask a question that might help? We had talked in last month in our, in our meetings that treasurer meet with the financial team to figure out, you know, what reports would be most beneficial for us governing. I'm wondering if there could be same sort of, you know, when, you know, as board members, staffing, it is something that we want to understand and, and be monitoring in, in a way that is actually accurate to our district. I'm wondering if, if it wouldn't help if we figured out what kind of type of a report is more feasible for your team, along with maybe, you know, what does that look like? I think, I appreciate what you've done, and I appreciate also that you're asking for the will of the board because it's very, I can only imagine how challenging it is to try to get us, you know, what we're, what many of us are asking in different, you know, we're trying, our understandings are all that seven people's understanding is very different. So I'm wondering if that might be a direction that we could do is, is having someone, I don't know, maybe it's, I don't even know who, who that would be if it was like committee-based, you know, or someone on the board to say, maybe it's, does that make sense?
Yes, and I was just gonna say, to me, I, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna assume in the 24, 25 column, that, that, that's the right size for 24, 25. Frankly, I don't care about anything past that. Because to Director Atkinson's point, moving forward, when this board sometime this summer or early fall sets budget parameters, my guess is administration's going to have to make a case for all 39 of these so that we can make an accurate ask of you and not just say, Dr. Thomas, we want all 39 administrators gone. So that, so we, I mean, and it gets to your, your point of maybe a more accurate job title that lends itself to what they actually do. I mean, administrative assistant could be anything, but like you said, there are certain things in Tanny's office she can't do, those have to be split out for audit reasons. So I'm more interested in, in, in that last column, bringing, bringing all these positions where it's needed to clarity so that when we, when we set those parameters later this year, we know exactly what we're asking of you. Because you're probably going to be put in a position where you're going to have to make a case, well, okay, we can cut this, but then. That makes more sense to me than work, than diving back into history where through cold as milk.
I would agree with that, I would.
Chair White, I'm hearing from a couple of you that, that sounds very similar to just different language use of, like, the organizational.
Yeah, that would lend itself to an org.
Yeah, I mean, I personally. So I'm wondering if that is the will of the board for us to dedicate our resources to that to bring forward sometime in the summer? As your, I don't know what timing, if you want, before budget parameters are set or after budget parameters are set, but is, is that more the will of the board than us to go back to look at historical data?
That would be mine.
Oh, I would agree too.
Yes, but I would say not filtered data that you have here because I think what you're calling administrators doesn't include a lot of the things that we would consider non-direct teaching staff. So when I look at all of the additional headcount that I've seen in various things over the last few years, it seems to me a lot of those adds are in counselors, deans, psychologists, social workers, that are teachers on the report. So for me, it's easier to look at the one, I don't know what's easier for you to produce, so I guess that's a question, but for me, it's easier to look at the one that you did by building, that's literally the entire staff of a dump, and we can take it somewhere.
So Director Mason, am I understanding the will of the board is that would be an entire organizational chart looked through with all positions, not specific to any group, but all positions within the group? So that's, and I, I am also hearing all, so correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't want us to be looking at different funds? Like if you don't want us to do organizational look at community ed or child nutrition? You know, if it's just, because that's going to get, that's going to, when it's going to get difficult because there will be some positions that are split. So do you want all positions to have that analysis? Or only positions that have a portion of funding from the whole one fund?
What's easy for you to produce? Like I think I'm fine slicing and dicing this information in Excel, but I'm okay at that, so I don't know what other people can do, but like what's easier for you to produce? Like the report that was provided last meeting, was that easier?
Director Mason, the report that was provided last meeting, I don't recall it had the fun differential.
Well, the fun, I can kind of like tell from what you had.
And the hard thing is like for, I'll speak to my department specifically. We have some of our, like our, our, some of our positions have like, 5% are covered by child nutrition and 8% are covered by community ed, but the vast majority is general fund. Other positions have similar things like that. So I think there are some that's very clear, like that whole position is child nutrition. But there's going to be others that are either different funds or grant-based or whatever that may be. So I, I think in terms, I'll just answer it this way. I think what will be the easiest, if we have a very clear will of the board of what the board is looking for, and then we will do our best to meet that. And if we can't systematically meet that, then we can come back to the board to ask for clarity on what direction to move forward differently.
I can give you an example of one of the challenges that we have as, as Director Herman and I work together is we have, in Skyward, you have a position, a person attached to a position, and you can match their salary to what the collective bargaining agreement is or their contract. And then there's also a line that may have, they have, they're entitled to longevity. So there's another line with the same position, the same person, that says longevity, the amount that they get for longevity, and each of those has a one FTE. Well, for us in the business office, it's not a one FTE. It's one person, and we only budget one FTE. But because it's a separate line that they're tracking in the assignment in the HR side, we have to scrub that data in order to make it make sense. We have to scrub that data in order to make it make sense for what we use it for. And again, H R would be using it for a different purpose. So they're tracking how much total people are getting paid, whereas I'm just trying to look at what we're budgeting as F T Es per F T E. So there's just challenges that we, so we can produce whatever report you want, just understand that it's, Skyward is not really conducive to a really clean position control.
Director Herman, if you did this one time for everyone, I understand that you're saying it's going to be extremely difficult. Say that's the will of the board, I'm gonna say thanks in advance. If you did it one time, would it be easier if we asked for it again? Or is it just gonna be just as difficult again, because you have to start from zero?
Director Johnson, can I ask for clarity? Are you referring to the historical position data or the organizational?
Tomorrow, right, so I'm moving forward.
Yeah, are you referring to the number of positions or are you referring to the organizational analysis of positions?
Everyone.
The number of positions?
Tomorrow.
Okay. I think moving forward, we'll we'll be able to pull the very similar report that Director Mason was referring to earlier. And that cleanup is significantly less cumbersome than the cleanup of all this historical data and all the other system. So that report would be very easy to provide to the board.
And that's adding the fund in there with how much? If you did that once, would it?
It's gonna change every month.
Chair White, may may I just? I I'm tapping back into what Director Mason suggested that was more clear from your vantage point, given your H R background and some of the work that you've done. My ask is, can we start with that report as our starting point to see, is is this the perspective? Because we have that as a reference point. And and then, and then make any modifications from there.
And are we talking about just fund one?
In in my next.
I don't know, I don't know why we need anything else.
My next question was gonna be fund one only. Because our continued conversations are gonna center around general fund reductions. At least for now, right? I say that just because I know there's some legislation out there that might co-mingle funds, but that day, that day has not come. But that way, we have a narrower approach, and it also cuts down how many staff are trying to generate this report. Director Herman, what are your thoughts on that narrowedness? Would that also help?
I think it'd be very helpful, I would, I would really like to work with you, Director Mason, on what you've seen in the past, and we can look.
And do a comparison, like, here's a model of what you've seen, and then how does that compare to what we've already produced? And see any kind of tweaks. And then use that as our start point to present something back for consideration. If that works with the board.
Can I make a suggestion too? Because we get an entire staff directory with titles. And because the Skyward thing was the different, I I scraped that, the entire directory into a spreadsheet and have this nurse, you know, focuses on these, has to travel between these three elementary schools. And we have so many counselors at the middle, in each middle school, because it gives you to five building and all that kind of stuff. And now, I'm not suggesting everyone do that, and I'm not suggesting you do it. But when you actually have a question about what somebody or something does, that staff directory is quite powerful. It's, and it's descriptive. So when people think, well, this person is like just a, writes memos and, you know, whatever, answers emails or, you know, something like that, you can actually see what they do more specifically in that building. Like, there's really only one, and then they have support help, you know, et cetera. You could also see this is student service support, because it, the directory is wonderful. And so that helps with, you know, and and also parents use that when they go on our website to find somebody, so you can see exactly what they're doing. And I I just find that reference to be very simple and easy. And and also, by the way, it does show a significant reduction in the in the number of staff. Like, assistant superintendent's gone, you're handling, you know, a couple of roles, stuff like that. So you can actually see that collapse year over year. And that helps, and then the new ones that have come up, you can actually see that too. So using that as a reference has been quite illustrative.
So are we in agreement, that's the starting point? You want?
So I'll make an arrangement for Director Herman and I to sit down with Director Mason as a comparison starting point like we did with some finance. And then bring forth an example for you all to have some discussion.
Okay. Before I forget, we were almost around the table. Director Johnson, on the budget, moving forward.
Yeah, I I I basically agree with essentially everyone else that, well, especially, I think with Director Atkinson, that what she said, you know. Previous board didn't really give the administration team parameters of what to do. And that's where we're at, where we're at now, so. Good with moving forward.
As am I. You will have Directors Mason and Johnson and Fran, by the time you're done, you, nothing changes. You'll get a chance to cut forty million dollars during your, during your term, so congratulations. I just think that moving forward, we have no choice, we're nibbling around the edges at this point. And have to do this so many more times in a row that, can we move on? And try to do a cleaner job next year and for this fall and do the best we can. Having said that, didn't forget this time, future agenda topics. Anybody have any suggestions? Just so you know, what I have so far, we knocked off a couple tonight. At the opening, beginning of the year, we we did have a agreement to talk about modifying that twenty-five thousand dollar authorization statement. We're gonna discuss that, the potential of an ad hoc committee around negotiations. Whether the board is interested in moving in that direction or not. School board town halls is something that has been submitted. And then as well as that, potentially working on board goals. And agenda development regarding recorded presentations of administrative reports ahead of time. It's posted, so we have a chance to look at them ahead of time. For those, those few I have, I have written down, is there, just so you know, so I'm trying to spread these out calendar properly when we want to talk about them. Any other potential, yes?
Chair White, there's not an immediate, in the immediate future. But I'd like to have a discussion on that K through three policy.
What context is?
It's more, it's a discussion on what it means, what what potentially changes. I know it, there's no, there's.
You're talking legislatively?
Yes, yes, the legisla, it's just what that means for our district again, not, we have other priorities as a board, but just as a discussion, I just be interested in learning more, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll, that's actually on our platform, so we'll be breaking the board back as as bills come through. We'll, we'll be sharing anything that's on the platform, we'll come back to you all and find the time to update you on kind of what that's all entailing.
Great, yeah, my whole point was it was on our platform, and I'm glad to see it on our platform, we just haven't really discussed it much.
Yeah, I was actually on the phone with Representative Baikberg this morning about that. And there, not much movement has happened yet, but they're still kind of back gathering on what is the lived experiences in in districts. And I will say, he will be looking for parents that he can bring forth from testimony on both sides of those who have had kids in dysregulated states, to those who are experiencing the dysregulation and they have to get evacuated and everything in between. So more to come on that, so we'll all make sure I work with Chair White to find ways that we have those touch points when we get those legislative updates to you guys.
And Director Olson, we did do a behavior update, like, it was like last year, we had a behavior update. So would that be similar to what you're looking for or?
It's two, it's two different things, actually. That's, that's, that's tied, that's a data set that is fueling the legislative conversation.
Right, no, I understand, but is it the data that you're looking for?
No, it's the update on the legislative platform.
Yeah, oh, okay, I'm sorry, we would do it.
The non-exclusionary disciplinary, sorry, I shouldn't have started talking about it. But that's, the non-exclusionary discipline legislation, we will provide updates.
Dr. Thomas, that we would hopefully get a comprehensive legislative update on where's some of those bills.
Oh, absolutely, as as things move through, we will be giving you those briefings. You will get them too, through M S P A, so, but we'll formally do it for our community.
Anyone else?
Yes, you you mentioned it, Director Atkinson, but discipline behavior update along with residency. Lickle just had a phenomenal study session on it, I was able to watch that whole thing, so I would love to do that either.
Yeah, I'll look at our.
Timing.
We have that coming as well, we do that every year, and so I just have to look at where it falls on the calendar, but we do have that.
March, we will be reviewing Fastbridge course. And I mean, I would love to see some sort of standing, like, curriculum review or something that we can really focus on academics. I feel like that needs to be a consistent agenda item somehow, I don't know how we can do that.
Yeah, so Hastings just did a curriculum audit, I know I had mentioned to that to you. And so I think what that, what that means, and I, that was actually my number one thing on our list is as we've developed our strategic plan, I feel like we need to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to our strategic plan of meeting academic excellence. And whether that means, and in our, in in our strategic plan, it says that curriculum is challenging, rigorous, and relevant. So challenging, rigorous, and then relevant would be, does it meet our standards? Does it meet M D E standards? And I think that would also help for us to be more transparent with our stakeholders as well on what curriculum are we actually teaching? Because other districts have, like, on their websites, this is the curriculum that's being used for middle school, math, English. And so I think it actually would be a good thing for two reasons. So I would reiterate what Director Mason said in saying, I would like to see a curriculum audit, K through twelve, come to the board. And then it could feed into, like I said, updating the website to be more transparent with our community of what the curriculum is in our district. And ensuring that it meets, aligns with our strategic plan.
Your thoughts? Seem reasonable? You want? So I'll get with Dr. Thomas about timing, because I'm sure that's gonna take a little bit of effort.
It's a big undertaking, I know, but I think it's important given our new plan. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, did you have something else, Director Mason? Okay, sorry, just wanted to add more context to what I was thinking around that, so.
Okay, anyone else?
And then also, are we relooking at our A and I funds as far as aligning those to the strategic plan as well?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's another thing that we can talk about.
And how they're being used and.
And just given some of the changes that are happening federally, as juxtaposed to state laws and statutes. I think there's probably a good opportunity to do some updates as we're learning more with that at the state level. So add that to the, to the list.
Sorry, and then I have one more thing, I'm not trying to be, we, this was something that I believe, I feel was owed coming out of the cell phone conversation that we had back.
I did bring this up.
Yeah, we were looking, I I thought it was very clear in that study session that we would work towards something a little bit more. How do you say, and maybe this is old board directors who are on whatever, but I feel like a cell phone update at the middle school and the high school. What's working, what's not working, do we need to tweak the policy, revise the policy? Is, is relevant, I think. If everybody else agrees with that, so.
I agree, yep. One more item, I apologize. Director White?
Sure.
I know that there was a safety audit done, I think it was last year or maybe it was the year before or something like that. Now that Levy came up with, and you like to talk about that, we had a lot of discussion over that in the policy committee. Just maybe digging into that a little bit more, maybe getting, you can have the building principals come in. I know Director Atkinson, I think maybe even, maybe Jess brought it up too, I think at the last meeting. How using, they brought up L T F M funds and and things like that over safety standards and protocols within the schools.
That was the legislative, that's part of our, that's part of our legislative piece. And the briefing that we did, Director Johnson, was a closed-meeting briefing with the board because of, we don't want bad people to listen to all of our security stuff.
We talked about that a lot, actually.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm I'm trying to understand maybe what.
Hey, let me, let me rethink that.
Okay.
And then.
You and I can connect and talk and all, okay, all right.
Okay. Good, all right. I think if there's nothing else, we are adjourned for the evening.